Hello, this is Erica Lawson here with Huntington News Network. We are outside the Campbell County Board of Education building. They're having the vote today on the excess levy and deciding how much funding is going to go to our libraries and parks. So let's go see if we can talk to some people about their concerns.
Because they can try again if that levy fails in May, they have a chance to try again before the current may expire. So there's no fiscal reason why you vote back in May. They can't strong law us.
I am a commissioner for-
Oh, start over, sorry. I didn't push start yet.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Josh Teck. I'm a commissioner for the Greater Huntington Park and Recreation District and we're impacted by this funding along with the Campbell County Library. So we're just here to support our parks and libraries.
Excellent. What, uh, what do you think will happen if we don't get this funding? What's at risk?
Well, library closures, um, park operating hours may have to go, well, it's hard, it's really hard to say because this funding doesn't, we don't get this money for two more years. So we'll have a totally different board on the library, totally different board on the parks by that time, but ultimately, people are going to lose their jobs, uh, recreation is going to suffer, we may have to even sell property. I mean, we're certainly not going to be able to build any new parks because that's money we won't have for maintenance. And we have plans on building a park right now that who knows if we'll be able to, uh, without the funding.
It seems like this board might be lazy and make a selfish decision that makes other people have to make very tough decisions.
You know, I mean, I'm, I'm a finance professor, so if I was going to grade them on fiscal responsibility, they'd have a failing grade because you don't, you don't save people's jobs by robbing Peter to pay Paul. If you want to save jobs, you go to the legislature and you ask them, where's the $2 billion surplus? Why are we cutting taxes instead of funding PEIA? Right? There's a, there's a bigger fish to fry here. The laziness is them not willing to fight for their teachers and their students and their community, the fight that needs to happen in the legislature to get the funding that they should have.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Josh. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Erica.
We're very excited to have some very special students to honor tonight at our coordination from June 11th to 16th, two rising seniors from Campbell Millan High School attended Rodden Hill and Earl State and Davis and Evans College.
Madam Black, Miltonville FFA, I got first place junior showmanship in the morning steer.
My name is Carly Crute from Miltonville FFA chapter and this week I received first place junior showmanship, first place senior showmanship, and best on road Peters steer.
Hello, my name is Cora Austin and I go to Philly Elementary and I got grand champion market hall.
My name is Addison Moon and I'm a member of Campbell Millan FFA. I received your grand champion market land along with first place junior showmanship and then I was male.
My name is Caitlin Dry. I go to Barbara's Little School and I got second place junior showmanship.
My name is Angela Shaker. I'm a graduate from Campbell Millan High School and I got second place senior showmanship in my Peters steer.
For those of you winners and with the Board of Education members, let's do all of the Campbell County winners first and then we'll do like the Campbell Millan and the other three. They're all done. Very good. That concludes our celebrations. Thank you.
And it's really what has led us to today, uh, raising this, uh, potential excess levy order, uh, as a group consideration. First and foremost, I want to share deep appreciation for the work of both the Campbell County Public Library and the Greater Huntington Parks and Recreation District. Today I address the board and our public, not only as superintendent, but also as a passionate advocate for the well-being and success of our students and our schools. No matter what action is taken today regarding the future of Campbell County Schools' excess levy, it's my hope that all three organizations will be able to continue working together to ensure the ultimate success of each entity in our shared community. However, I'd like to be able to take a moment and recognize and appreciate, uh, the contribution of these organizations, uh, working together in our community to provide our integral pillars of support, fostering education, growth, and recreation for our residents and that does not fall short, um, as it relates to our administration and I think this board. The impact cannot be underestimated and I am deeply grateful for their unwavering commitment to our shared community. However, today's conversation compels us to make difficult decisions rooted in the best interest of our students and schools. The discussion taking place this evening is one that I truly wish we did not have to have. The excess levy serves as the lifeblood of our education system, enabling us to fulfill our mission and our constitutional obligation of providing a thorough and efficient system of free public schools. It empowers us to invest in our facilities, our teachers, our students, and ultimately shaping the future of Campbell County residents and future leaders. However, current and forecasted pressures by the school district's budget have required our administration and the board to make some very difficult decisions. To provide context for these decisions, I believe it is important to share an overview of what has led us to this particular point in our meeting today. And in order to do that, I feel it's really important to go back to 2019 when, uh, the school district and the board, uh, entered into a plan to develop a comprehensive educational facilities plan. That plan outlined district's facility needs from the year 2010 through 2013. In order to accomplish many of the items that were in that comprehensive, uh, educational facilities plan which exceeded over $200 million, uh, we went to the voters in 2020 and asked them to approve a school construction bond which provided for renovations to two elementary schools, two of our high schools, three new elementary schools, and the massive, uh, undertaking of putting our career technical education, uh, programs and our facility, um, into the 21st century. And so the, back in, uh, that, during that special election, we ended up passing and so we had a commitment to the voters to be able to complete these projects. And I'm very proud to say that, uh, Campbell Millan and Huntington High are currently under those construction renovations. Height Saunders Nichols Elementary are also undertaking those renovations and are nearing completion. And then of course, we have Davis Creek Elementary which is under construction, um, Meadows Elementary which is on the board agenda this evening for the approval of the contractor for that project. Milton Elementary is under construction as well and the Campbell County Career Technology Center is going out to bid in just two, in about two weeks. One of the most important things to think about as it relates to that facility plan that we took to the voters was that it did not include any school consolidations or school closures. That was something that we, we knew that was important to this community and to the school district and so we were very proud to be able to bring that as one of the largest billion initiatives in the history of the state. Of course, at that point in 2020, uh, when the projected, uh, costs of those facilities were being planned and brought to the voters, no one could have foreseen, um, not only the impact of COVID-19, but also the tremendous inflation that has occurred and impacted construction costs, not just across our country, but specifically right here in West Virginia. And, um, as the projects for the 2020 bond project have been put out for bid, they've been routinely coming in to 40 to sometimes 50% over budget, which is again, very indicative of how construction projects across the state of West Virginia, uh, as it relates to school projects or any other construction projects, um, it's in alignment with. And those are even after, uh, our conversations, our work with our architects and engineers to, uh, make sure that we are within the confines of policy 6200, which specifies exactly how much, um, should really go in and what would be required as to our buildings as it relates to student population of buildings as well. And so the district takes seriously its commitment to our taxpayers to complete these projects. However, each project that comes under budget does eat further and further into our district's general fund balance. And as I begin to talk with the board this evening and refer, and remind the board of the conversation we had, um, it's also in an interest to make sure that as our citizens that are here this evening are also understanding, uh, the financial outlook that we have and really what these, when I talk about the general fund, what does that literally mean? So we're going to, we're going to dig into that a little bit deeper so we can have some clarity and as much transparency as we can provide, um, for our, our constituents that are here this evening. The pandemic has had other negative budgetary effects, uh, on Campbell County schools. Much of the state funding the district receive, receives is directly related to student enrolled. And since early 2020, we have continued to see our enrollment steadily decline. Some families during the pandemic were nervous to send their children back to school while COVID-19 was still active. Some had moved from the area, while others, um, um, have chosen homeschooling, private schools, or newly available virtual charter schools for their children. Most recently, the Hope Scholarship passed by the West Virginia Legislature is also further decreasing in a way and placing additional pressures on our finances. And again, we'll be able to share some of those specifics just so that we can all be on the same page as well. Had it not been for the school district receiving federal dollars from the elementary second, uh, secondary school emergency relief fund which was called ESSER, as well as the American Rescue Plan, ARC, um, more drastic budgetary cuts would have already likely occurred. But the specific provisions under the American Rescue Plan dollars was to provide for additional support and resources to address learning loss as a result of the pandemic, as well as, um, continuity of service. So making sure that even though there may be less students or, um, a greater need for student resources like nurses, social workers, psychologists, custodians to help keep our buildings as clean as possible, um, that's what those dollars were designed for and expected to be, to be used. And, uh, from the very beginning, from the very beginning of receiving these dollars, we've tried to be as transparent and as forward with, um, those that this affects, our school principals, our school leadership, um, individuals that are going into those roles, for example, um, our interventionists across our schools, that these are grant-funded positions and that, that there is no guarantee that they will continue. So we've tried to communicate that as well. Had it not been for the school district receiving these federal dollars and, um, the, specifically the American Rescue Plan dollars, more drastic budgetary cuts, again, would have already occurred and these funds were really a godsend for the school district, allowing us to maintain, again, the continuity of operations and adequate staffing levels to address the learning loss like I mentioned. I want to, I want to give you a little bit of an overview of what those funds did help pay for. It helped pay for school nurses in every single school. It helped pay for 34 interventionists to meet the individual student learning needs of our, of our students, as well as very, what I would call high-quality summer program that we've known, we have not been able to provide in the past because we've been able to expand that over the last several years. These emergency funds also relieve pressure on the district's general fund, allowing us to hire needed counselors to address students' mental health at, at every school and to provide all students in our school district the continuation of the free breakfast and free lunch program in our school district. That is something that we've been able to do since 2016, but just as anybody can, uh, I think relate, when you go to the grocery store, things cost more in order to feed your families and the same thing applies with our school district. The district's general fund contribution to providing free meals alone is anticipated to be more than $4.1 million in fiscal year 2024. Um, and I'd like to be able to break that down a little bit. So the free breakfast and free lunch program that this district has continued to prioritize for our students because I think we can all agree that a hungry child, it's very difficult to learn and hunger is not something that just faces students poverty, um, it can, it can impact any family developing any kind of, uh, financial hardship. And so we do get a reimbursement from the federal government, but the, but the reimbursement for the totality of the program still requires that our school district budget, again, that $4.1 million, um, uh, at least for the 2024 school year in order to meet those obligations. After receiving those American Rescue Plan funds, the school district, and I'll own this, um, I did not raise any recommendation to this board to reduce staff from fiscal year 2023. It was the first time in a long time. And the reason was is that the federal funds were used, again, for the intent of providing and addressing learning loss and continuity of service for, uh, our district operations. And so we chose very carefully not to do that because we knew that that would impact our students and our classrooms. However, from the beginning, again, I've been trying to be transparent with our, um, our employees, I've been trying, I've tried to be transparent with this board about that these eventual reductions in these positions would likely occur and that we would be preparing for them. And that's what we did this past year. Last year, back in, um, personnel season, which is in the months of March and April, um, this board, uh, accepted my recommendation and did a very difficult decision, a very challenging decision, to eliminate more than 80 positions funded through ARC and our general fund, not just ARC, but also our general fund. Those 80 positions affected many families. Many times they're a sole source of, uh, a provider for the family or the only level of insurance for their family. And so when we have to make that, that decision, we try to make decisions on what's going to least impact the students in our classrooms. As the funds completely expired in September of 2024 and with student enrollment still continuing to decline, this past year we lost an estimated, I think it was 50, 50 or so students. It is likely that we will need to, uh, eliminate at least 150 additional positions this year. And again, this was a discussion that we had when we eliminated and ripped 80 positions during the budget season or during the, during the transfer season, but also during the budget season as to what our fiscal forecasting was going to be when the American Rescue Plan dollars were over. In addition, during those times, I've also been very forward, um, not just with this board, but in our own leadership meetings of the district, that when these positions have to be eliminated, that it will be across the entire district. It will not just be impacting our schools, it will be absolutely impacting the district, the district level, district level administration, district level services, and we will have to realign how our staff is, is in place in order to meet the challenges and the needs of our school district. So as we deliberate this future excess levy, it is crucial to understand that the funding priorities have been rigorously examined and that we have had to make substantial cuts and balances to this proposed levy call which impact various aspects of our school district. It is also very important to emphasize and underscore that the excess levy is not directly related to the ARC, the American Rescue Plan funding and that the decisions based upon American Rescue Plan dollars ended have nothing to do and will have actually already been completed before the levy that will hopefully and optimistically be approved by voters would go into action in 2026. There is, I think, only one provision that this board, uh, uh, discussed in prioritizing in the proposed excess levy that is up for discussion tonight that has anything to do with or related to American Rescue Plan dollars, and that is the continuation of our robust summer, summer learning, uh, uh, summer school programs. That is something that has been a huge success to address learning loss. It's something that our community, I think tremendously value and our families value and to be able to continue that, um, through excess levy funding is something that we have discussed. In addition, um, the, to this for background, the excess levy is something that has to be renewed by Campbell County voters every five years. At this board's first, um, meeting in July, on the 17th, the board found that, um, needs identified for the excess levy being proposed, uh, that funding exceeded the district's maximum levy capacity at 29 million, by about $10 million. So what was, what was on the docket for all of the expenditures that would be required was about $10 million over around $39 million. And it's important to note that $29 million, when we're talking about the excess levy, represents 100% of the school district's levying capacity, which is designed to go for the operation of our school district. And in order, in order to balance that proposed levy call, the board began working to eliminate that $10 million, uh, overage from its funding priorities. Some of the largest cuts made included those to technology for the school district, which was $1.4 million, contracted services, which was in the, in the current excess levy, so the board made a decision to cut that, which was $2 million, employee salaries, $3 million, and facility maintenance, 1.5 million. So those were some of the discussions and the proposals that this board proposed in order to get the excess levy to, uh, the, the, the allowable funding amount. To maximize available funds directly impacting schools, the board also reduced funding by the Campbell County Public Library to a level recommended by the West Virginia Department of Education and eliminated funding for the Greater Huntington Parks and Recreation District, which combined currently receives 7.99% of the school district's excess levy funds in. And I want to say that these were all proposed cuts, nothing is final until the board actually discusses it, but those were the things that were being floated and discussed as to what would need to be reduced in order to bring an excess levy into, uh, what would be allowable. These identified cuts in excess levy funding are in no way a reflection on the excellent programs and services our parks and loggers offer. However, with legislative changes including employee pay raises, PEIA premium increases, special education required funding, and other essential resources, we found ourselves in a very most undesirable position of having to make some tremendously difficult decisions. In addition to, um, their attendance at previous public board education meetings, representatives of both the Greater Huntington Parks and Recreation District and the Campbell County Public Library have been invited to attend two meetings here at the central office for me and we've shared with them the challenges the school district is facing as well as the Supreme Court decision that we believe applies to this situation. And I want to say that the executive directors of the library and the ARC as well. So I wanted to say that, that I would-
Get him, get him.
Please, please, please come to work, please. I wanted to convey my deep appreciation for the executive directors of the Greater Huntington Parks and Recreation District and the library board who have come and met with me and have, uh, had very open, transparent dialogues about the needs of each entity and I appreciate them meeting with me and discussing these, these opportunities and these, these challenges we face. We believe that based on prior Supreme Court rulings, the school district cannot be compelled to provide funding for parks and libraries and that our constitutional priority as a school district is providing adequate resources for our schools. Our invitation, dialogue with, and collaboration, um, again, as we've, we've met twice and, um, the, the last time we, now actually both times, we really had talked about what can we do to compromise and I yearn for compromise, uh, a way that we can sustain and valuable services that we, that they provide while ensuring long-term stability for school districts. And at this point, we have not been able to reach a solution, um, and, and no solution has been able to be presented to me at this time. And I understand the, the challenges that they are, they are themselves facing, but I wanted to be able to share with the board that we have had and we've tried to have what I would say is productive dialogue and I appreciate their professionalism. As stated previously, should the proposed reductions to these agencies be approved by the board, the school district wants to continue and is willing to work with these valuable partners as they seek alternative sources of funding. What I would suggest is that, that those things be important with our legislative partners, um, to be able to provide the funding that they require in addition to our, our, our levying capacity and something that our voters can also choose to approve. At this time, I would like to ask our treasurer, Mr. Drew Rockman, to provide the board and our community with some additional details about the district's financial situation. I guess when we move, we definitely, we don't have a projector, do we? Okay, so, um, we'll have to try to provide example.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Sax. Dr. Sax mentioned, I, I had a game here with a visual, uh, which unfortunately we found bad.
We can't hear you.
Uh, the board members, what you do have in your packet, you should have under the special board items tab, you should have a packet that has the Campbell County logo on it and it says excess levy presentation. Have you all been able to find your packets? If there's any trouble at all, we've got a few extras in here.
Let me, let me just ask you a second. Mr. Rock, or I'm sorry, Mr. Jackson, is there a way to file a, a screen to literally see this presentation? I'm sorry.
Not rapid.
How long would it take?
He spent that whole technology.
Yeah? Drew, Drew, I would put it out, would you put a link on our website so people can access it?
Sure.
Can we just take it?
On the homepage of the website, uh, so you can be able to get a copy of the presentation around the other. Just to recap with you all, board members, uh, everybody has located this in their packets. We're all good.
Under the special board items tab.
Under the special board items tab. All right, thank you. All right. So, uh, for those in the audience, I'm Drew Rockman, I'm the treasurer of Campbell County Schools and I'm going to go over, uh, there's really three parts to this presentation. Those of you that will now have it available on your phone, we're going to talk a little bit about our current financial situation, do a little bit of a recap of the 2324 budget, uh, which the board, uh, was involved in during, during May and, and June. Then we'll go over what the levy order currently stands at, proposed levy order, uh, the board will be considering, uh, later this evening, and then at the end of the presentation, we'll get into some possible impacts of the proposed levy order. So board members, if you'll turn with me to page two, page one is just the cover page. Page two is just a recap of the budget that you adopted on May 16th. And just to provide a little bit of a recap, for some of you, this is, this is going to be just completely a review, but I know we have a lot of people in the audience and we, we may want to try to get caught up to speed a little bit. The budget that the board approved in May, even after significant cuts to the budget, uh, cuts that were carefully, uh, identified and considered, there was still a budget shortfall of over $1.9 million. So the, you know, the budget that's on page two of the document, those that are following along, uh, you know, there's a lot of numbers on the page, but, but basically the takeaway is, is out of our general fund, we didn't have, we were still short on revenue of about $1.9 million in order to cover all of our anticipated expenses for the upcoming year.
And Drew, that was just general fund.
Just the general, yes, that's correct. The other funds are all, were all in balance, there's sufficient revenue to meet all the obligations that the other fund paid for, but the general fund, which is where most of our activity takes place, that's- of our activity takes place, that's where everything really happens, we had about a 1.9 million dollar shortfall. And we're going to remind these schools has lost their 1,600 students, which is about 12.4% of its student population. And enrollment is the number one driver in how state aid works, how the state aid formula works and how we're able to operate our school system. The state aid formula is an extremely complicated calculation. You know, during budget sessions, I've given you all handouts that kind of give the highlights, but, but just to kind of keep it in general terms, really the number one driver of the state aid formula is a problem. The more kids you have in your school system, the more money the school system has available for funding all the needs of those students have. On to page four, those of us that are following along, it's really four, five, and six. This is an abridged version of the budget handout that we went through during our budget development process back in the spring, just to kind of keep things simple. But I know that we don't have a screen, so I'll just try to get some of the highlights here for everybody. You know, as I mentioned, it's about a 1.9 million dollar shortfall, and so that's caused a, you know, pretty serious financial issue for the county in the short term.
Drew, I hate to stop you there, but I think it's also important to understand for people that are in the room, to remind the board that the personnel season occurs prior to when we have to be able to bring a budget to the board for approval. And personnel season also happens to coincide usually during the legislative session. And so we have to make decisions on personnel for the future year, a lot of times before legislative bills have been signed by the governor to know exactly how new legislative actions may occur after July 1 is going to impact our budgets. So a lot of times, as we do our budget forecasting starting in December, January, there are things that we may not be aware of that are going to impact the district budget in effect of July 1. And when we realize that there were other legislative requirements, PEIA and state fusion, and the RIV insurance, which we're going to talk about in a minute, that was all after personnel season. So had we known that information prior to, these are personal deadlines that we have to be able to adhere to, had we known that, then the reductions to staff may have actually been much more extensive to be able to help balance the budget for this upcoming school year. I just wanted to be able to provide that. There.
Thank you, that's, that's an excellent point. And the next bullet point is, is PEIA, that's something we didn't anticipate as we were developing our budget. During the legislative session, the legislature passed a bill which the intent was to try to ensure the solvency, long-term solvency of PEIA, which did require increased premiums, not just for employees, but also for employers. A lot of times, you know, you've probably heard in the news about what it did to employees, but there was a very similar impact to the employer premiums. Unfortunately, when the legislature adopted the budget at the state level for this year, they did not adopt and not fund it to cover our PEIA costs as a county. And so there's about $2.7 million that the legislature did not fund Campbell County's schools that had also put us in quite a bind financially.
And I want to, I apologize, but I want to also reiterate here that we're not, that that was an accident, and our, and talking with our legislative partners, that that was an oversight that they planned to address during a special session or something. And so we're not, we're not trying to argue that their actions are, but we're not trying to argue that they've done something intentional that has affected our budget, but we have, you know, assurances that we're going to try to address that PEIA difference. And that's an important facet, I think, to understand here, that, that this may be addressed in future special sessions.
We are, we are hopeful that that's the case, because whenever we got to serious budget discussions, we actually had a budget shortfall of about 4.6 million dollars. And because of the actions that the local board took, we were able to bring it down to about a 1.9 million dollar shortfall. But that was a gap that we just were not able to close, and a lot of it had to do with the shortfall in the PEIA. So in addition to the issues of the general fund, the budget also included an estimated $10.8 million in art funding to be able to continue to employ hardcore interventionists, so those are our teachers that work one-on-one or in short groups with students that may be struggling, to get those students caught up, and also other staff that may address learning loss. The money's also being used for this upcoming year for after-school programs, summer school programs, and also to continue the virtual school option in the county. The funds, the art funds that we do have expire in September of '24, and right now we are on track to extend those prior to that deadline. The budget also included the pre, virtual pre-debt program, Dr. Sax alluded to that, is about $4.1 million out of the general fund every year for that. For the upcoming year, we have an estimated $25 million in the special education funds. The year before, we only budgeted about $21 million. And there's really two reasons why those costs have gone up. Number one is because there was a state pay raise and an increase in PEIA premiums. The cost of, especially the cost of everything has gone up. But also because our needs have gone up, we have, we have more students in special ed than I think we ever had, and the needs are so acute that we've had to hire additional staff. And in fact, last school year, we had to hire six additional professionals, so those are teachers, another kind of support staff, and 22 aides to address the needs of students, of special needs students across the district. And just those positions we had to add was almost $1.3 million in cost. The state pay raise, we, we did have a little bit of a heads up on that one, so we tried to prepare for that one as, as we developed the budget. But anytime the salaries go up, the cost of the positions go up, so the pay raise that the state gave this year cost almost $1.2 million to the district locally, because we have positions that have to be funded by the, by the local general fund. We did run into some significant cost increases with liability insurance. The West Virginia Board of Risk and Insurance Management ensures all the school boards across West Virginia, they completely insure all of the governmental agencies in West Virginia. But for us, the amount that they had asked us to budget for for this upcoming year, that they notified us on our cost review, it's about 145% increase in premiums. And I don't know about you all, but my car insurance went up 145%, definitely, definitely put a big dent in my budget. The Third Grade Success Act also added some costs. One thing that, you know, obviously there's, there's a lot of good, that we're going to have funding from the state to be able to provide an extra helper in our first grade classrooms this year, for classrooms that have more than 12 students. But in all likelihood, there's going to be a local cost. Initial estimates are that that could be well over $300,000 in the first year, and by the time that the law goes into full effect, which is three years, a couple of years from now, two or three years from now, it could be as much as a million dollars a year locally because there will be aides in first grade, second grade, and third grade.
And Drew, I want to say that that piece of legislation, I think, was a very important piece of legislation. I think it was a good piece of legislation that needed to occur, and then while it provided, based upon a per-people allocation, a number of aides that would need to go into our first grade, second grade, and third grade classrooms, it didn't really account for the number of classrooms that we have based upon class size requirements. That is also a West Virginia Board of Education on a state policy, and it's provided, and so the, the difference between the number of classrooms compared to the number of positions that are funded in state aid because of the Third Grade Success Act is where we are forecasting the difference in what we would need to cover by general fund dollars. I just wanted to provide some initial clarity.
This is the first year where in our beginning budget, our state aid has been affected by public charter schools. And based on the computations from the Department of Education, they look at statewide attendance, statewide on all data, our district lost about $270,000 because we had 38 students enroll in virtual charter schools. We're now also in a period where the HOPE Scholarship is playing a role, and according to our, our attendance department, there's been, through this year, up to 210 students now that have elected to enroll in the HOPE Scholarship program. And based on the amount of money per student that students receive, that could be a reduction in state aid of over $900,000 if, if, if all of those students received the benefit and would have attended public ed. The board, just to try to finish up our recaps, the board intentionally was able to cut out $2.7 million from the budget that was proposed originally back in May. And they were able to do that by removing about $2.5 million worth of capital outlay that, these are projects that need to be done, it would be a wonderful thing if we're able to do them right now, but we deferred those because we just don't really have the money to do that right now. And then there's a, there's a variety of other issues, of other items that the board elected to, to not move forward on at this time, and those are all listed in the handout. Page seven, to list those items.
Please, this is important information. Do I say it to you?
He's already read it.
You know it already.
If you read it, it was delivered to you.
We're not going to do it, the budget is not going to happen.
We do want you to continue on with the presentation, and we will listen to each and every one of you who signed up to speak, and we will not interrupt you, I promise. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. So number seven does list, for those of you that are still following along, these were the items that the board, the capital outlay items that the board will reduce or completely eliminate in the budget. And several of them are large projects, roof replacements, tells you how serious our financial issues are for delaying roofing projects. Page eight shows an example of where we currently stand with our federal COVID funds, and we did receive three rounds of ESERF. ESERF I was received the first year at the end of 2020, those funds were retired, exhausted at this time. ESERF II was received in December of '21, December of 2020, December of 2020. Those funds are set to expire in September, and they will be, they will be exhausted later. And our ESERF, which was the large grant, which is where our continuity of services was really available to us, that is, we still have about $10.4 million bringing in, which, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, brought about what we needed to be able to still maintain our services for the upcoming school year it's about to begin. Board members, page nine is just a chart that shows roughly what our allocation is on the budget and how the money is being spent. This is a district-wide chart. It's the same chart that you would typically see in the strategic plan. And then page, page 10 and on through page... Page 10 through 19, we'll fly right through these, but this is, this is really, this is good information, these, these next few pages. So I know there's been some discussion out there, I want to make sure board members are aware of this, also to provide awareness. You know, there's been some people who have, who have indicated that, you know, Campbell County Schools has $240 million, so how can you not figure this out? So I want to address that. So on page 11, you can see I highlighted several things, that's the way each one of these pages are, it's just highlighting different parts of this new document, which is the original budget that we looked at at the beginning. So our total budget for this year is 240 million. I don't disagree, anyone who's pointed that out to us, that's, that's absolutely true, that's a true statement. Now, of that 240 million, not all of that is available for power and discretion, so that's what I want to clear up there. So page 12, this is where we start kind of chipping away at this. Included in that $240 million is 6.6 million for debt service. So the taxpayers pay a tax every year, this is, this is a levy that the taxpayers pay. And this is to make the mortgage payment, if you will, on our loans. So all these new schools that are being built, or the schools that are being renovated, they are being paid for with bond funds. But just like with a mortgage, when you go buy a home, or if you're buying a car and you take a loan out to buy a car, you don't just get to keep the car or the house, you've got to make, you've got to make the payment. And so that's really what the debt service fund is. So 6.6 million of that is just making our debt payment. Page 13 is the Federal Stimulus Stabilization Fund, which is about 10.8 million. That's the same number I quoted you a few moments ago that we're using this year for art, for our, our addressing learning loss of staff, for summer school and after school. So that money, obviously, there's restrictions, the federal government has guidelines on how that money is to be spent, and so that's another 10.8. Page 14 shows the special revenue fund, which is another almost $27 million. And that is money that we have every year for state and federal grants. So several, quite a few of our schools qualify as Title I schools because they have higher poverty rates, and so there are guidelines on how that money is to be used, and you can't just go for, you know, general district needs, it has to be spent for specific schools. And they have to receive benefits that are above and beyond what all the other schools get. Food services in there, federal special ed, and quite a few other grants. But 26.7 million of our budget is just in grants that really we expect to receive every year on an annual basis, but it's not really available for the, for the board or for administration or anybody to, to use for any kind of generic district need. So page 15, we're finally back to the general fund, and I recognize there's still, yeah, there's still a number there, but wait just a minute, wait just a minute. So in the general fund, that is where most of the teacher salaries-
Drew, this is to be able to, again, provide transparency to the board and the community as to the very challenging decision that this board has to make. And, and I would also add, I would also like to add, I would also like to add that being able to make sure that the community as well as the board is aware of the financial position that we are in, in addition to the public comments, that the public comments that we're going to listen to and to get feedback from, helps to inform this board as to what decisions they need to make. And so that's why this is a process that is very important for us to be able to communicate- And so that's why this is a process that is very important for us to be able to communicate to each and every single one of you. And so we do appreciate your patience and understanding of that, but a lot of questions have been asked that we want to be able to help answer, and this is how we're trying to help answer some of those questions.
Great, good to hear, Mr. Rodkin.
Thank you. So for those of us that are still with us, we're on page 16.
Thank you.
Within the general fund, I want to make sure that we're not, we're all on the same page, and we're not looking at things incorrectly. So within the general fund, the budget includes our beginning balance, and so that includes money that we've saved over time, money that we intend to use for the bond projects that are, we know are over budget. We've got to use, we've got to come up with some funds to be able to accomplish those projects. And so at, back in May, whenever the budget was compiled, our projected unassigned balance was $40,971,000. And we do believe that a significant portion of this may be required in order to accomplish all of the bond projects. But that's money that even if we were not in the situation with the bond projects, that is unique to us. But good prudent financial management is that you want to match your expenses to your revenues. And so when someone makes the statement that when you've got $240 million, this is, this is money that is being accumulated to be able to accomplish the major goal. This is not money that's going to replenish itself every year. This is one-time money that's there.
We gave it to you.
So on page 17, there's an additional million and a half that is, that is coming from art. And so again, that is, at this point, one-time money, that's money that will not be available in future years, money that really won't be available to be able to make long-term decisions with. But it is something that the general fund is able to benefit quite enough. So page 18, as we continue to work our way through the general fund, these are state and federal funds that come into the general fund. The smaller of the two, these are Medicaid reimbursements. These are funds that the county gets that are reimbursements for special education costs that we've incurred because we've provided certain healthcare services to students with certain medical needs. And so those are funds that, since they're really just a reimbursement of costs that have already been incurred, it's really not money that would be appropriate to be used to fund a lot of the continuing, continuing costs. These are things, this is just a reimbursement, that's all that really is. So we do receive state aid. The state aid, this is coming from the state aid formula, so it's based on enrollment. There's also some funds in here where we're recognizing costs that the state's paying down the pension liability, so that number actually includes that as well, and that's usually somewhere in ballpark at $14 million. But the state aid is primarily meant for salaries of staff. That's, it funds your teachers, it funds your bus drivers, it funds your custodians. That's primarily what that is for, but we also receive things, you know, for bus replacement, we receive money for maintenance-type expenses, and it's really, that is like, that money has really just been as the bare-bones fund for running a school system. And so some school systems, they depend very, very heavily, just like we do, but those monies come from the state, and there's a formula that, you know, like I mentioned earlier, it's heavily driven on student enrollment. So finally, we get to page 19, where we've gone from $240 million down to $57, $58. And so that's property taxes. And the excess levy is really just a part of that. So the discussion that we're having this evening over this excess levy order, we're talking about property taxes, you know, we're not talking about state aid, we're not talking about federal grants, we're talking about property taxes. So page 20 shows a little bit more about those property taxes. And so there are a couple of different levies that add up to that $57 million. And so there's a general levy, which the legislature sets those rates, the legislature has impact on how those, how those funds are raised, and actually a large part of that, that $23,660, those funds, very little of that actually stays in capital outlay. Most of that is actually a cost share for the state aid program, and that's how school systems across the state are able to fund just bare-bones activity. So even though we record it as revenue, whenever the state determines how much money that Cavill County is going to get in state aid, they subtract out most of this amount. So we don't, we don't really receive that much of the $23 million. Now, what we do get to eat is the $29,250,512. That is the excess levy, and that's the number that our board has been trying to hit over the past couple of weeks, as everything has been put together, and different scenarios have been considered, is it's really that $29,250,000. So on page 23, board members, this is the handout, if you remember, as we've had levy meetings the last, you know, year in July. And so this is really the step-by-step process on how we got to where we are. When we first presented our costs, as Dr. Sacks mentioned, it was nearly $10 million over that $29 million. If we're going to fund everything just as is, knowing that, you know, there is a world coming where we're going to have a lot less revenue in the district, if we're going to fund everything just as is, we were almost $10 million in the hole. So the board took great care and great consideration to be able to make adjustments to the excess levy. And so each one of these columns show the steps as those changes were made. You know, across the top, there's a 717, that was one board meeting, that was, that was an initial proposal, and then there were some changes, and finally on 720, that was the last meeting that we had to discuss this issue. And that shows you really where we pretty much left off following that. And again, the totals across the bottom come up to $29,250,512. So page 24 is the excess levy order that is for your consideration this evening. Now, board members, I do believe you have a yellow folder, I think I see Mrs. Vaughn lifting hers up right there, actually. Carolyn had those ready for you in your binder. There's a lot of legal leaves in there, that's the, that's the official document, the levy order that we have to, there to be for your consideration. But what I have available here, just to make it a one-page for everyone's convenience, is on page 24, and so that lists, that lists the, all the provisions and how much money was applied to each provision. Now, I know we've already highlighted on those, but I know there's some people in the audience who may not have a device and may not see this in front of us, so I'll just quickly go through there. School safety was the first item on the levy order for your consideration this evening, Cyber safety and device security.
Sorry, I just want to make sure, when we're talking about school safety, board members, we're specifically talking about the school resource officers at each of our middle schools and high schools, and the security guards we provide at our two high schools. That is specifically what that is helping fund, to make sure that we can cover the costs of those police officers in our school.
Thank you. So the second provision is cyber safety and device security. If you'll remember, Mr. Jackson mentioned some of the needs that we had, maybe the last meeting we had, and they were discussing levy call. So there's $200,000 set aside for that. The third item on the proposed levy call is instructional support in school libraries with a dollar amount assigned of $2,82,924. Next item is career and technical education and workforce development, $3,120,530. The next section is the largest, by dollar amounts, employee salaries and benefits, and that is $16,794,470.
Drew, that is important to realize, that that was another significant cuts that were made from, you know, that over to about $10 million, they made about a three and a half million dollar cut there for reduction, if I recall.
So, you know, obviously, that's a large part of our budget. I think this year's budget, about 84% of our budget is staff and benefits. We are a service industry, so that's not atypical, but because that's what we do for a living, you know, we provide a service, salaries are our biggest cost. Summer programs is the next item on there with an estimated cost of $551,375, followed by school playgrounds and outdoor learning spaces. And the board had set aside $215,500. Athletics at $836,808. Facilities maintenance and equipment at $4,711,000. And then finally, there's a provision to support the Cavill County Mother Library of $195,890, which is there now, which is a part of a bad, recognized part of it. And all of that totals up to our magic number, $29,250,512.
Now, Drew, now, I appreciate you providing that overview of what has been proposed and discussed by the board over the last several workshops that we've had, but I think it's also important to consider, understanding that through the large constituency of the community and the community that is advocating that this board consider funding the park and the library at a different level, at a level that had been in the previous level, for example. That, what, do you, do you know what that number equals exactly?
So if we would fund them...
If we were to fund them based upon that original order, I think was, what the legislature reviewed on that, was at 717.
So, yes, so the amount that...
So those $1.70, $1,784,000 is for the public library, $551,000 for the little place, the park for recreation district. So roughly $2.35 million or so, you know, rounding it up. But the point is, is that that $2.3 million that those funds would cover, the board would have to make a decision as to what to reduce within this excess levy order that we have here. So they would have to make a decision as to reducing something like additional, for example, additional employee salaries and benefits, or reduction in instructional support, or summer programs, or salaries. So that is, that is something that the board would have to weigh in considering what the library and the park district did request. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Are you talking about boosters, or is that for?
Where's the lawsuit budget?
So the final part of the presentation, I mentioned, you know, the goal tonight was to kind of lay out for everyone the current state of the budget, go over the excess levy order as it stands, we just did that. So the last part of the presentation is talking a little bit about what the impact might be to the park board and the library.
Please, please. Please be quiet, please.
Please, please don't cut our service. So I'd like to preface that...
Please be quiet.
So for those, for those of you that may already be reviewing...
Please be respectful, please.
So I want to preface that for anyone who has already looked at it, there is a lot more information in this packet on the library than there is the park. And so I do want to make sure that I can kind of explain myself why I don't have a lot of information on the park. And it's not meant to kick on either agency one more than the other, this is, this is just trying to provide facts for everyone. In fact, we have a little bit of a concept of what we're looking at. So to my knowledge, and I'm not all-knowing, I recognize that, so I'm not saying that this is, could be, I'm just not aware of something. But we have done quite a bit of research, and from what we have found, what I'm aware of, is that Cavill County Schools is the only district in West Virginia that funds a park district. So here in Homewood, I'm going to show you...
You got the best part!
I failed to mention to you earlier that upon conversation with council, that they have discovered that there is one additional district in the state, at least that they found, that does have funding for a park. We don't know what that is.
Of course, there is one park.
You don't know what the district is. But I wanted to clarify.
Okay, so actually, that's exactly what I had to note. So to my knowledge, to my knowledge, there's only one other board of education that funds even a single park, and that's Mineral County, and that's in there existing. Now, to my knowledge, there's no other district that provides funding to support an entire district park. So there's not a lot of data to be able to compare county over county with the park board, like we will with the library, to be able to give some context on funding that a lot of the...
Please.
Let them speak.
Mr. Rodkin, what you just said about the other districts not funding the library or the parks, could they not have their own excess levy? As to other counties, they have, they can, you can have your own excess levy if you want to. But then, if you were to be a little bit more respectful...
Lot of areas in parks for education.
...a little bit more respectful.
Well, don't tell our stories!
Just be a little bit more respectful. I'm not a regular boy, I'm saying that you can have your own excess levy too. We are not the only, we are not the only county, there's other counties that have their own excess levy.
There are certain circumstances where there may be some provisions, some carve-outs where we're...
Let me just, I don't want to, let me just... So there, in, under current statutes, there are, well, two entities within the county that can actually levy on us. The first is the student district, the local school district. I apologize. There are two entities that can be levied on us. The first is the local school district, and the other is the county commission. So Cavill County Schools' excess levy is at 100% of what the law allows for us to levy dollars against private classes, and then of course, there's the county commission. So either of those two entities allow for, have the authority to allow for entities to ask... to ask the voters to levy dollars. In this situation, we're at a hundred percent already, so then the question becomes, what capacity is the county commission? Would they, and I don't want the answer to that, I don't, I don't speak for the county commission, but those are the only two entities. If the county commission was already at a capacity, then that would restrict them to be able to authorize entities to levy against, to levy and bring a levy to the voters. So, the short answer is, the short answer is that there's only two bodies, the school district and the county commission, and we can't speak for the county commission. Mr. Rockin, I want to ask you, if it's okay with the board president, the discussion that you have on showing exactly how we've been funding and where we're proposing to fund the library system comparable to all of the other fifty-five counties, we could, we, we can provide that, hopefully, to the board, perhaps when we get closer to when the board needs to make the decision.
We'll listen to you later.
So, what I would ask, Mr. Rockin, is if you were prepared to be able to answer those questions here in a second, we do have, Mr. Hunter with Bold Rice, who is our counsel, that I would like to come up and address some of the questions that have been brought forward here by our constituents as it relates to legislative acts and Supreme Court decisions. So, if you would mind, could you please introduce yourself to the board in your specialty of law?
Thank you, Mr. Superston. My name is Roger Hunter, I'm a lawyer with Bold Rice, I've been practicing law, I think this is my forty-fourth year, I started in seventy-nine. Most, all of those started in nineteen eighty here in West Virginia. And my specialization is finance, in particular, one of my practice areas is school financing. And so, I work on excess levies all around the state for school boards, I worked on bond issues all around the state for school boards, I work on these purchase financings and other issues that come up in the field of school finance. So, that's, that's my focus, and my day is one of the areas I've spent a lot of time on. And we travel all over the state, and we're familiar with not all of the school levies, but we are going to look into all of them, just for your information, we will look at every one, and we will identify who does and doesn't definitively fund a library or parks or recreation. But I don't have that information here today. What I want to focus on tonight is a question of law, of constitutional law, of a decision in two thousand thirteen in particular that is very applicable here. And what's that decision? It was a decision of the West Virginia Superior Court, which involves litigation brought by the county school board, the Canoa County Board of Education, and it was brought against the Canoa Public Library Commission, as well as the State Board of Ed and the State Superintendent School at that time. And the whole issue there is identical to the issue here, that they had a special act of the legislature from nineteen fifty-seven that told Canoa County to divert some of their funding in order to fund the public library system, okay? That is similar to your laws that are on the books passed by the legislature but not part of code, still law on the books passed by the legislature to fund the library commission as well as parks and recreation. And so, like here, the Canoa County Board of Education had, was staring at this tough situation, and they were staring at a law on the books that put a gun to their head and basically said, "You shall fund the public library of Canoa County and the public library." Now, now, that, that was challenged, that was challenged by the Canoa County Board of Education, and the Supreme Court ruled several important decision points that are very relevant here, and I want to mention what they were just briefly, and then I'll listen in. I have to answer questions you may have as well, but I'll be brief. Point number one, they ruled, as they have multiple times since nineteen seventy-nine, they ruled that under our constitution in the state of West Virginia, public education, the right to a free education, a thorough and efficient education through the public school system is a fundamental paramount constitutional right in the state of West Virginia, a fundamental constitutional right. That's point one. Point two, at that time, the state's school aid formula has many steps, it is complex, but at the end of the day, the Supreme Court found that at that time, the state's school aid formula did nothing, nothing to make Canoa County Board of Education whole for the money that this special act of the legislature forced them to direct toward the library. That's important, because in the end, they looked around the state of West Virginia, to the extent there were counties out there, school boards, that didn't have such special laws they had to reckon with, did not have to divert any of their funding, either their regular funding or their excess levy monies, to a library, then the Supreme Court held that because education is a fundamental constitutional right in West Virginia, and because certain school boards, or like Canoa County, were subject to a special act of the legislature that ordered them to divert some of their funding to the library system, that that was in violation of the state constitution and was unconstitutional, and that law was stricken down. Now, in our opinion, quite simply, the same facts and circumstances that you face and your tough decisions that you've got to wrestle with and we've heard about, I won't go into that, that's not my topic, but the point of the matter is that we believe that that Supreme Court decision is good law, we believe that it's still on the books, we believe that your special acts directing you to divert funds to either the Library Commission or the Parks and Recreation Board are unconstitutional, under the same logic of that Supreme Court case. So, I am going to sit down after that, unless you have questions you would like me to answer. I'll be brief.
My question is, what happened, what did the Supreme Court say to us about it?
Who cares what she thinks is unconstitutional?
You can ask that question when we're listening to delegations. All right, are you signed up to speed, man?
No, I'm not. There were many sheets of paper, and I did not want to take the voice away from the public.
Well, how about, how about we add your name to the list? Put your name, ma'am.
What is the belief, do you know what drives the belief that our law is different, our special act law is different than Canoa's that was deemed unconstitutional?
When you look at the language of the Supreme Court decision, it refers to a special law that forces the Board of Education to divert either its regular or excess levy funds in a different direction, away from the schools to the library. To me, I see no difference. We've looked at it, we, we can't, we don't think there's any meaningful difference. And while you did not join that lawsuit, it doesn't make any difference, because that is the law of the land in the state of West Virginia right now, as we stand here today. That's a Supreme Court decision. To not get too far in the weeds, but lawyers know that when the Supreme Court, when the Supreme Court makes a decision in West Virginia, they summarize their decision points in what's called syllabus points. They're at the very beginning of the decision before they start talking about explaining what they just did, all right? So, the syllabus points become law in the state of West Virginia, and those syllabus points that I've summarized here tonight are still law, and they've not been overturned. And to the extent that if you weren't party to that, I don't know why, it doesn't really matter today, I can find no meaningful, we can find no meaningful mistake in that.
Thank you.
We want the delegations to be heard.
I always make a statement before this section of the agenda, just to make sure we're all on board. The school board recognizes the value of public comment on educational, financial, administrative, and other issues relating to the board's work. Therefore, we provide a period for public participation at every board meeting, and we publish rules to govern such participation in board meetings. Public comment is not an open forum to attack individual school system employees or board members. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. The board appreciates the public's input and willingness, and will consider each comment, but will not respond, debate, or answer questions during comments on agenda items or during the public comment section. When you are called to come forward, please state your name, address, and group affiliation if appropriate. Amy Peel is ready.
My name is Amy Peel, I'm president of Cavill AFT, motion sixty-three forty. I dread one. I wanted to preface first by saying, I'm so thrilled that the FFA was honored here this evening. My late father was president of the Milton High School at the FFA in nineteen fifty. Daddy also went on to sell farm machinery, and he told me, and I learned this from him, that he would stand behind everything he sold except the Bueller's Prayer. Some of you all probably can't get all ready, but anyway, here we go. Once again, I am here on behalf of my union brothers and sisters. Our biggest fear is that come March, which is the month of rift and transfers, that those of us on the front lines will be cut and cut deep. I say this because of all the spending that's being done, just to name a few, two clerk jobs at over ninety thousand dollars each for being a liaison to the board for the new construction of both high schools. Then we add an additional director's job, whose title is now new construction and remodeling at a cost of around a hundred twenty thousand dollars a year. Previously, I believe this title was under a different name, which was a two-hundred-and-forty-eight contract. Now, this new job title is two-hundred-and-sixty-one days a year. This person has received a thirty thousand dollar pay raise for basically three more days a year, because a two-sixty-one employee gets eighteen paid vacation days a year. So, over the last three years, this person has had a raise of salary of forty-two thousand dollars. There were created two new director's jobs at two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars per year. And if I'm not mistaken, these two jobs redundant a two-forty-day contract, which I stated earlier, has a lower salary. This is an addition of four hundred thousand dollars that taxpayers will have to foot over. These are just a few of the examples that I will share at this time. I have some invited my union brothers and sisters who are wanting a copy of documents to see where our money is going and what it's going for. I'm just afraid that we, the ones on the front line, service and professional personnel who spend every day with these children, will be the first to go when the cuts are made. Professional and service employee personnel do not want to take the blow of all of these cuts when the people at the central office are safe and in a bunker. This is not a personal attack on the central office employees or the members of the Board of Education. It's business, it's nothing personal, and I just want our business to be protected.
Thank you!
Good evening, board. My name is Linda Keifer, and I've been a library pageant, pageant for over thirty years. As you can tell, I'm very passionate, that's why I'm here tonight about our library system. And I feel that the cuts that could be here would devastate and devastate, of course, the whole system. People use the libraries every day, they are a hub of activity. You can get your papers notarized, children use it for schoolwork when they don't have Wi-Fi at home. There's music they can get, books. If you think anything, if you could not go to a library, it would be a great loss to our humanity, and also greatly for the parks, the same way. It's a great place to go and get outdoors and have activity. I honestly, I know we all feel like small babies here tonight against the Goliaths, and I understand your point too, you know, everybody's loved you, and I do it myself. But please, if there's any way, take the hard one from the top to the bottom, and maybe look again, it looks maybe tough. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Can you correct me on that?
Yay.
Yay.
Okay. My name is Maxine Yaget, and I represent just a homeowner and a voter and a citizen in this county. I've always in the past voted for any school levy, because I think education is the most important thing. But seeing what's going on here, I don't know if I, if I really can anymore. Everybody's going to talk about how important public libraries are, and so I don't need to say what everybody else here thinks. What I do worry about is how the board can cut funding from one point seven million dollars to one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And I, I think I'm not the only one who worries about that kind of cut to our, to our library systems. That seems to be extremely uneven. I think it's very insulting to the board, and to me as a, as a person who frequents the library, and who pays all my taxes. I think that the school board, obviously, as we see here, has no business funding parks or libraries, because I think there's a majority of decision that you don't care about libraries. I didn't even go so far to say is, there appears to be hostility, and I'm worried about a secondary agenda.
I'm here, I'm in Ginnieville, in Tattlerixburg, and I, I, at least I sleep there, I do, I worked in Huntington and lived in Huntington for all these years. What I would like to say, I'm not going, you, if you think, if you need to know where I stand on this, talk to Ryan, because I've been here for a twenty-minute chat for that mission, but I would like to ask you to delay and postpone the vote on this until, for a month. Not indefinitely, for a month, to the first meeting in September, to give us a chance, because we haven't known about it for very long, to see if there's any resolution to this other than what is being proposed here today. It would be devastating for both the parks and the libraries, and it's going to be devastating to the schools. So, I don't know. I don't know what the answer would be, but let's give us thirty days to see if we can come up with a, a different solution. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melody South, I'm fifteen years old, and I live in Guindao. I grew up in Guindao country, and I remember going to the library, being able to go walk to the library, check out a book when I was little, they'd come to our library, they would read to us. They have so much in the community, just in my community alone, I can only imagine what they do to other communities, and taking them away from people my age and other people, like little kids, and just everybody, is just wrong in my opinion. I did a intern there for five days, and I never realized how many people actually went to a library until I sat my, sat my time there and realized how many people actually cared about the library. People want to be there. They go there to get the lunches, they go there to read to their kids, they go there to get on the computers. It's not just a library in my opinion, it's more... It's more, it's a community group. Like, it's more, it's like a family-sized community. It's not just a library. And at schools, we get education, but at libraries, we get education too. Libraries are libraries. I attended Crossroads at one point, and I actually loved the building. I loved the history. I loved the old. And I believe that having a nice building is not the most important thing in the world. I believe that I would be fine with having just a historic building. So repairing Huntington High with stuff that, I do attend Huntington High, but with repairing it for stuff that does not need it, it's just crazy. Why don't we use that money for other stuff? Use it for stuff that we actually want. The kids are the people that are, we're supposed to be caring about. The children are the ones that are going to the schools. The children are the ones that are doing all of this stuff. Like, they're farming, they're doing what they need to to get through. So the education is the most important part, and I don't believe the building, I feel like the building being repaired and all these buildings being repaired, and I do think that things do need to be repaired. I understand that completely, that things do need to be repaired and that they do need to be upgraded. But having a whole new office when everything was fine how it was, that's a little excessive in my opinion. Changing our bathrooms where everybody can't use the bathroom. To see us literally go in there and use the bathroom, to hear us using the bathroom. Do you know how many kids have, like, pee pride? They can't do it in front of the people. Like, it's so true. But to just change all of the bathrooms at Huntington High for what? For the baby cobbles? That's not gonna fix it. It's really not. Whether you know or not they're doing it in their own classroom. But, what I'm saying is, libraries are a big part of the community and of the community out there. So I believe if you take them away, then it's, I don't believe in it. I really don't think that would be a good idea. I really don't.
Thank you.
I'll close up a lot of the agreement, so I don't go over time. Good evening. My name is Mary Smurl, and I am the head artistic director at Huntington area Regional Theater. First, I'd like to say, learning does not end when a child leaves the classroom, at least not if the community that surrounds the schools is doing their job. HART is a volunteer branch of the Greater Huntington Park and Recreation District. Our shows serve over three thousand people this summer alone who came up to enjoy them. The most important part of that is, we had one-hundred-and-twenty-three cast members, seventy-one of whom were children in the public school system, most being in grades K through five. They started in February and worked three and a half months, learning skill sets that are absolutely essential. Work ethic, memorization, reading music, physical fitness, teamwork, and community service. These kids paint and set, they assemble costumes, and they learn to run tech. So much more. This cost, and the cost actually of all this educational participation is nothing, because it is all funded by Greater Huntington Park and Recreation District. We all, we actually, we volunteered last year to fifteen Calhoun County schools in five days. We worked with you all. We worked with the school board to provide a show that was educational and sent a positive message. We plan to do the same this fall and spring, well, hopefully we will. Again, I point this out because all of this is funded by Greater Huntington Park and Recreation District. The activities and events that GHBRD sponsor are entertaining, diverse, educational, and fun. They are sometimes the only vacation experience that a child has in the summer. Kathy McKennan and Lauren Patrick work tirelessly for our children's, our community's families and children. I'm a mom of four graduates of Calhoun County Schools. I have a doctor, a secondary law student, an artist illustrator, and a professional podcaster. I am an avid supporter of the public schools, and I am pro teacher. I was PTO everything from nineteen ninety-one to two thousand seventeen. So I guess you could say, I've been your partner for a considerable amount of time. Lastly, I'm the grandmother of two granddaughters who are proud graduates of Miss Stacy's library class. They learn so much before they even set a foot in a public classroom. Their love of books and reading is amazing. It is said that it takes a village. I urge you, I urge you to take a minute and look around at what your village agencies have been doing to support what you do, because trust me, I speak from experience when I say, you have not so far, nor can you in the future do it alone. When you come up short, for whatever reason, there are many options, but taking from those who partner with you is not one of them. Do better. Your community and your children are watching.
Yes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Chaboni. My address is Virginia, and I don't represent any group, except that I'm a frequent user of the library. I was a martial professor for thirty years, and I was also a literacy volunteer at the library for almost two years.
Thank you.
There are obviously so many reasons to have all the branches of the public library functioning fully. The parks are also great, but I am going to just talk about the libraries. Everybody knows about the standard resources and services that the library provides. You know, obviously, books, music, TV shows, films, notary printing, ancestry, researches, city history researches, children's activities, crafts, readings, art displays, et cetera, computer use. But also, there are two special programs that are dear to my heart, and I think that if the library's budget is cut, these programs might be the first to go. One is the Bookmobile. There is a Bookmobile that goes out once a month to the elderly and disabled. These people love the Bookmobile. The person who takes the books out realizes that these people are hungry for personal contact. They like to talk. They like to, you know, get service, as anybody would. The other program is the literacy program that I mentioned before. The library donates fifteen thousand dollars to this program a year, charges no rent, and does a lot of the work for the program, like bookkeeping, et cetera. There are lots of costs, the books, the director, et cetera, but the people who do the actual teaching are volunteers. And I worked with a young man who was trying to get his GMD. He was a smart person, but needed a lot of work, and I was happy to do it. These programs seem especially important, and also, the other things that I'm afraid would get cut would be the branches. Branches are essential in their neighborhoods. Everybody needs a library near them. Not everybody has transportation. Everybody needs that. And the last thing I'd like to say, besides, I forgot to mention before that I am a homeowner since nineteen ninety-one and I pay all my taxes. What the pandemic showed us, among other things, is how important personal contact is, how important community is, and our public libraries are a huge part of the community. And in a lot of ways, they are the community's sentries. Yes, thank you.
Members of the Board of Education, thank you for the opportunity to appear before you. I do so on behalf of the Board of Education's participation in the funding of parks, recreation, and conservation in the area's libraries. It is not only the law in our area, but regardless of law, it is the right and proper thing. Benefits of park, recreation, and conservation, and libraries for the citizenry.
First of all, I just want to thank everybody that's here that are being a part of the process, whether you're observing or you're reporting your opinion. I cannot state the need, the immense need for our parks and libraries any better than you all state. So I will not do that for you. What I will do, though, is come on behalf of the state and the Board of Education to offer a solution. And part of that solution is not only to table this, but it's also to table the Meadows Elementary vote. The reason being is that current fundback is seven billion dollars over budget. If we are able to table that note tonight, you all in the Board are going to convene with them and ask that company to sharpen their pencil over there. Sharpen their pencil over there. And I will submit to you, if they do nothing, we already have people in Huntington and Ruppler that would do it for at least minimum six million dollars less. That savings right there alone, which I've found for you all tonight, will help us to fix this issue. I also want to remind you, towards the curve, the people who are brought to our libraries have worked awful hard. I know this is not tough. I know most of you all, not all of you all there, but I know you've worked really, really hard. I know you've done it for a long time. And so I would say to you all, coming from the perspective of somebody who is elected, there are going to be times where you have to do things that you might not personally want to do, but it's the will of the people and the majority of the people. And not just here tonight, but we have heard over the past week or two, the majority of our residents think there's just a certain, a better way to do this. And so I don't want to let it go, and I do appreciate you all's work. But again, the solution is to table both of those votes. Go back, sharpen your pencil. And if that's not what you want, you should use somebody local to do it here. Thank you all.
Any questions, any items for discussion?
Yes, sir. I just, I wanted to make sure the Board is clear. Mr. Rocken has provided the actual excess levy order that had been discussed. It's in the folder. Drew, is there anything else that they need to know about what is on the agenda specifically for this potential vote or whatever the Board may choose to do? I just want to make sure the Board has guidance as to what they have.
Yes, so in your yellow folder, that is the excess levy order, that is the actual document that's supporting your report consideration. You've seen the summary, and we went over, presented everything that's on the levy order. And so we're basically at a point now where you, as Board, have the option to further discuss, ask any questions of me, or Mr. Hunter, or Dr. Sacks. Any questions you have, clarify, and at a certain point, the Ball will ultimately be in your court, make a motion, on how you would like to move forward.
Any questions at last? Mr. Pauling?
Mr. Rocken, what is the timeframe for getting this? Now, I know we were trying to get it out first of August. Some people have asked for a delay in that, but what is the timeframe in being able to get that accomplished?
So I have requested a timeline from the county clerk's office, but they've not given us a definitive deadline on when everything needs to be turned in. Typically, if we look at what we did five years ago, the last time that we prepared to take a levy to the voters, if the Board approves something, I'm giving in a September board meeting that established our intent to participate in the election. So, you know, there is a little bit of flexibility at this point, being that it is August first.
As in today?
As in today, that's what I'm saying, that today's August first. So we are ahead of schedule to come, and so the question that Mr. Pauling had was, at least, the way I understood the question was that, you know, do basically, you know, do we have to have this approved tonight, you know, and get on the ballot? I do believe you have some additional time, if you could be, further time to consider the levy order, but it is on the agenda this evening, so you certainly have the ability of the Board, however you choose to make a motion regarding this item.
Or amendments or anything?
Or amendments. This is all yours?
They have the option to be able to have a move to accept the order as it is. You have the option to amend the order this evening, this evening, or you have the option to table it during the meeting. Those are all of the options the Board has in session.
Table the votes!
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 Mrs. Bob has the floor. Thank you.
Can you hear me, Drew?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that better?
Hi, how do you do?
Delegate Hornbuckle proposed a possible option. Is that a legal option that Calhoun County schools can take under the state laws of how we do our bidding? Is that a viable option? Is my question.
Referring to the legislature, the, the, or the Meadows.
The Meadows.
Can you clarify? I'm sorry, this is all.
The Meadows was, he had an offer.
I can help answer, Drew and I can help answer the Meadows question, but I want to make sure I understand what the question is regarding the.
Let's hit on Meadows first. Tell me, explain to me, is that a legal option that we can take to try to reduce spending and then use those funds in a different way? Is that an option?
Well, the architecture firm for each of the bond projects was put out to bid, and all of the vendors that wanted to be considered placed bids and were selected based upon those bids for each of the bond projects. So actually, one of the architecture firms that Mr. Hornbuckle is referencing, the local architect, is actually the architect for Davis Creek Elementary, as well as Meadows Elementary, I'm sorry, Davis Creek Elementary and Pike Saunders and Nichols Renovations. They were the architect firms selected for that. The architecture firm for Meadows is also the architecture firm that was selected for the, for Calhoun County Current Neurology Center, and those two, and then, and, I'm sorry, as well as the two high school safe school entrances. Those are the renovations that are going on with the high schools, is safe school entrances, because those two schools did not have safe school entrances, as well as the restroom renovation. Part of the safe school renovations required the office complex to be restructured in order to accommodate how people come into the building and are equipped with a monthly income campus. But to shift the current projects, we would have to incur architecture fees on a different architect. On top of that, there is the, once those architects have designed the buildings, then put out the bid, and the Meadows just put out the bid. It had a base bid, it had a base bid as well as alternates that the school community was asking to be considered in that project. When it came in, it was over budget.
Mr. Hunter, in your opinion, do you feel like the way that we have been operating under this levy would be, is unconstitutional? We have a constitutional requirement as far as education is concerned.
I agree on education.
And I agree, I agree, it's our education, but there is a difference between having an education and being held accountable for something.
Like school libraries?
So, my question is, how? Do you feel like?
This is not, I'm gonna interrupt. Please, please, listen to the board members, please.
Listen to the people!
Listen with your voice!
There's always disagreement, and we understand that there's disagreement.
This is, uh, tires.
There is no disagreement. Everyone in the crowd told me to vote now.
The President would follow the protocol, would follow the agenda, they had their time to speak, their delegations were patient, now it's time for them to be respectful. One, 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 break your decision.
You've been on your fun, 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 fun.
Did I give you any repeat?
Well, I think the question was, the pass. And I think that if the board that adopted that order did what it did, now, if I had been asked back then, I would have had exactly the same thing. I wasn't, okay? So what you have on that order, you have in that order. But the question is, would I have had a different opinion back then? No, I wouldn't have had a different opinion a week ago, a year ago? No, I wouldn't have had. And so when we met with the library officials and the parks officials, we discussed that. And, you know, I expressed that opinion then, as I did tonight. No, I'm just saying that if the question is, would I have had the same opinion back then, that prior board voted on that existing order, I would have had the same opinion. I wouldn't have asked. So that's sort of a hypothetical question, but yeah, my opinion would be the same back then as it were, then a few weeks ago.
I do not appreciate hearing you speak about the meetings that you had, meetings that we had to beg for you to have, meetings that I had to make special calls to special people, asking them to make calls to you, so that you would finally hear us. Because your attorney, who apparently also has decided to waive attorney-client privilege by offering you legal advice in front of this entire room. Your attorney has also said things that were not true. Because I may not have been in that meeting, but I do trust the people who were in those meetings, and I also know that we have tried to reach out many, many times to collaborate with you, and every time was turned down. You can shake your head all you want, but I was there, I saw it, I heard it, and yeah, who called you on Thursday night and said you need to call? Who called you? Who was it, Brian?
That's what I'm asking!
Please, delegateations to be heard are to be heard. You have no authority or right to question anybody else.
Do you want my answer? And that's a long, long answer.
Do you want it?
Evasive!
We should just say your chips!
As much as your attorney is offering legal advice here, there are other attorneys who've also been in the room, who offer very different legal advice. So really, it does come down to you making a decision as to what's right. You can talk about constitutionality all you want, I've got plenty of questions now that you've decided to waive attorney-client privilege, but I'll keep those to myself for now. You have the opportunity to do the right thing. If you want to go ahead with the vote, I mean, so be it. This is my, another opportunity of me saying, on behalf of the parks, we would love the opportunity to actually talk with you and not being spoken at. So that would be a first step, was talking and dialoguing with people.
Are you one of the two people that...
No.
Delegate Hornbuckle? No, we're not, no. All right, we can't do this. You can go back to your chair on the board. You push down the...
Okay, I agree with you. I really do want to avoid any legal action, and that's why I'm speaking, I wasn't going to speak, Dr. Morbiot's book on behalf of the park board, I think he said, is what he needed to say. There's one thing that your lawyer's not telling you, and I don't mean that in a negative way, it's just there's the fact that in the 2013 Supreme Court ruling, they do allow exceptions for disparate treatment. In that 45 pages, the word "park" is nowhere mentioned. I'm not going to talk about the library, that's a gray area, but the word "park," the reference to parks is not mentioned. And there is exception that the Supreme Court will allow if they determine that disparate treatment, which you are treated disparitely, right, from other counties, as your treasurer told you, you're the only county in the state that has to fund a park district, no other county does. That's disparate treatment, but the Supreme Court allows for disparate treatment when there is a state interest to do so. And there is nothing in the state of West Virginia like the Greater Honeyton Park Recreation District. You see that tonight, you saw that when you said that, and you got a chain of applause. So if we go to court, there will be a strong legal argument on our side that says that disparate treatment, that less than 2% of your levy capacity, that .05% of your general revenue budget is a pittance, but that means so much to the community, it means so much to the park district, and there is absolutely a state interest to be made, an argument to be made for that exception for the park district. And that has to be proven in a court of law. Until it does, until it is proven by, or determined by the circuit court judge or by the Supreme Court, you don't have that authority. It has to go through the court system. So I would just caution you, that's the reason why I would point to you with legal action on this, is because they do allow exceptions. And I think the Greater Honeyton Park Recreation District is an exception. We are 100 years old, we predate the state parks, right? We are older than every state park, we are older than every county park. Our law was written at a time when counties were not allowed to create parks, when cities were not allowed to create parks. We go that far back. And so there is a state interest, and we can argue that in court, or we can let the voters decide in a minute. So I just encourage you to consider that. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Can everybody? Can you hear me? Been trying to jot down some comments here. This situation is very challenging, because I don't just have the honor of serving on the Board of Education, I am also on the library. These proposed changes to the levy do not come in a place of matters, but from a place of concern for our students. Cavill County Schools has lost funding due to decreased enrollment, due to the HOOP scholarship through unfunded state mandates, and an increased inflation rate. Due to these lost funds and increased costs, we have been forced to reevaluate the levy as well as our budget. This board has publicly discussed several adjustments to the levy and cuts to the budget everywhere we can, so that those losses and increased costs that we are facing as a school district do not reach our students. This board is not asking anyone to do anything that we are not already doing. We will be forced to reduce staff and program. People will, people will lose their jobs. Up until these discussions, the Board of Education has been in a place where they could safely be generous with the library parks through the levy. That was passed, thank you, Mrs. Hornbuckle, that was graciously passed by our voters. But unfortunately, times have changed, and we no longer can safely do so without losing student resources and their programs at risk. Currently, the students of Cavill County Schools receive a device, every one of them, either an iPad, either an iPad or a MacBook at no cost to them.
We don't care!
Currently, the students of Cavill County School receive a device, either an iPad or a MacBook at no cost to them. Each student also receives meals during the school year and during the summer through Cavill County Schools' summer feeding program, at no cost, at no cost to them. These services are only cost-free to the students, because Cavill County School plans, and we pay for them.
The government pays for them.
I do not, I do not want to do anything that could pit any services that our students and that our families have come to count on in any form of jeopardy.
Recuse yourself! Don't worry, we'll have to do much longer. Next election cycle, we'll have to do it again.
Again, my ass, do we have a motion? Pauling?
People think quiet so they can get on with their...
Ms. Pauling, I don't think, I don't think I know, but no one on this board desires to defund any library, desires to defund the Greater Honeyton Park.
And come up with a better plan.
This decision that we've come to, I think only, it only goes to show, for me personally, I think that libraries in the park system should have a more secure stream of funding. Because it all hinges, the funding that we're speaking of hinges on the passing of the levy. I know that the levy has a track record, a long track record of passing, but if something happened and the levy did not pass, even if we fully funded it in the levy call, and the levy did not pass, their funding would be gone. So in, in my opinion, they need a secure stream of funding, and I think that's accomplished through the legislature.
Please, not no order. Please listen to the board members. We listen to you, we listen to you. It's our responsibility, please, it's our responsibility. And by the way, we are not paid salaries to be on the board in a life and free to me. So if I had a big, high salary, then I could donate, I would do so. I certainly would do so. As I'm sure others would. But please, extend us the same courtesy that we have to you. We listen. You were silent for everyone who spoke on behalf of the parks and the boards, but yet you're not giving us an opportunity to express what you need to know. There are many things that have not come out here. Once again, I ask that you allow the board to conduct the business of this school system. Please.
This didn't mean to say a former thing, despite a lot of people are saying, I didn't know how I was going to vote this evening. It has been weighing on our parks and on our minds for a while now, and you can believe that, and I believe that, I understand, that's perfectly common. I want to share this quote with the board, you all too, as something that has struck me as my position as a member of the Board of Education. So it's a quote from former West Virginia Supreme Court Justice Cleckley, and it says that Cleckley wisely observed, "Section 1, Article of Article 12 necessarily exerts pressure on our legislature and boards of education to make hard and sometimes undesirable decisions, while staying within constitutional limitations. Thus, we are compelled to underscore that financial hardship is an insufficient basis for ignoring the West Virginia Constitution. The imposition of these difficult choices is an inevitable and unavoidable attribute that emanates from our Constitution." And with that, Madam President, I will make a motion that we accept the levy call as intended.
All right, the motion has been made by Member Pauling, seconded by Mr. Miller, v. Allen Baker, seconded by Mr. Aye. Aye.